Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take your call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Millenowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Winsell.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. First on the agenda is our Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Order of Business for November 12, 2019, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Approval of the Minutes. This is the Minutes from the regular meeting of October 22, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I move that we approve the Minutes from October 22, 2019, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined in Item 4A.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing and Comment on Agenda Items. This is for the audience. Please step up to the microphone. You have a limit of two minutes, and this is on Agenda Items only.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Dana Parrish, Greenlee Park, Dearborn Heights. I'd like to first congratulate Chair, Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, Councilman Abdella, and Councilman Muscat for their victories in this last election.
Thank you.
Secondly, from Item 9A, the Miller Canfield Legal Opinion Regarding the EPA Levy.
I'll skip along to the letter in Page 2 in the conclusion, but midway through the letter, it says, "However, according to the terms of the financial judgment, the city has missed the payment deadline for using other available funds for the upcoming year and is required by the federal court order to levy the judgment tax on the December 1, 2019 tax bills." So basically, the city of Dearborn Heights, because they received the bill in April, didn't bring it before this body, this is my understanding, didn't bring it before this body, the city council, until October. Now we have no choice but to levy against all the residents in the city of Dearborn Heights an additional tax, which none of us can use, instead of having the option to use the CSO funds that were available. I think it's a disgrace. Either someone let us down and didn't do their job, was lazy, or did it on purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Public Hearing and Comment on Agenda Items only. You have two minutes.
Hello, Madam Chair, Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nadia Fadlala. I'm here tonight at, I live at 26750 Doc Stater Street in Dearborn Heights. I'm here tonight because I'm being considered for the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I am a real estate agent, and I have a commercial designation for real estate. I'm working on other things in the real estate business, but I have a lot of knowledge when it comes to these items. I've lived in the city for over 20 years. I'm very excited to serve the city and the public. I think I'd be a great asset, and I hope you consider me, and I'd be honored to work for the city and the people of Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further public hearings and comment on Agenda Items?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ollie Berry. I'm also a Dearborn Heights resident. I've been a resident for over 18 years with the city of Dearborn Heights. I'm also married. I'm a father of five, and I currently work for Delta Airlines in the customer service industry. Also doing that, I also, I'm a board member with the Dearborn Heights Raiders Junior Football League, and on top of that, I also was able to, I do a lot of remodeling in homes and stuff that I've done personal work on in the cities, and also I was a general contractor that I've done some work with the city in the past. I am also being considered, I'm sorry, and I should have introduced, I should have said this, this is about Agenda 90, about the zoning board. I'm also being considered to be nominated for the zoning board if I'm given the opportunity. And if I am, I'd definitely be doing my best to making all the correct judgments and working well with my board members and to getting the job done well. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment on Agenda Items? Two minutes, please.
Good evening, Zuhair Abalhama. You know the address. I want to talk about the CSO money. People who, you know, we collected taxes or overage from 2012 to 2015, $3.8 million. Now, for those people who sold their homes in 2012, '13, '14, and '15 and left the city, they paid a portion of that money. Are we going to refund them that money, which they are not going to benefit from it at all in the city?
We can't answer questions, we can't answer you?
I know you can't, because some people got jabbed and cheated out of, I don't care if it is $1 or $100. That's why I'm going to ask the city council, please ask the legal department to start leading you on how to change our charter. We need to change, because there is no accountability, and I do not want to see this to happen again. Okay? Somebody has to be accountable for what they done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments on Agenda Items? At this time, we will go on to the next item. This is Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move, Council, approve Fund Transfer 6-1 through 641 as submitted.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I had a question on Item Number 640. Please, if I'm out of line, if I'm out of line and it cannot be discussed, please let me know if legally it cannot be discussed. But on Item 640, this is the payee is Gary Miyaki, and this is for legal services and expenses advances for September 2019. On Page Number 5, and this is a charge from 10/10/19, and this is for Gary. It says, "Start research regarding public purpose issue. Telephone to Human Resource Director Saboda Perry. Complete research and draft email to elected city officials and draft email to Human Resource Director Saboda Perry and mayor's staff." The amount was $1,106, which I get, obviously, we're charged for whatever we use, but I was kind of a little bit concerned here, because of the amount, $1,106, at what we pay per hour, that's a pretty substantial amount. So at this point, as we speak today, being November, a month later, may I know what that public purpose issue is, instead of just public purpose issue, if you don't mind, before I authorize the payment?
Sure. That was the issue that was raised by Councilman Bazey with respect to the pension issue, and that required a lot of research.
No, I'm not questioning the amount. I just wanted to make sure it's so that it's public. That's what that was for?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions?
Council Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, Item 67, Page 2, it says total due fund. I know the amount on the invoice is $13,528. Mid-page, it says total due, but it says a refund. It doesn't say, I don't know what that means. It's a refund, and why are we paying $13,528?
Okay, on that invoice, if it was in brackets, it would be a refund?
Yes.
If it was due, you had to pay it. This is from the audit of workman's comp. You give them an estimate of payroll for the year, and then I have to give them actuals, and then they adjust the bill accordingly, depending on what the actuals fell through. So this is saying that we had to pay $13,000 more than what the estimate was. That's what their calculation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Second item, 611, I know I've talked about this. I have a problem with this. Lot of arbitrations, lot of grievances, and also a lot of issues with part-time employees. I'm sure I'm not going to get an answer today, but, you know, we have a contract with a TPOM. I don't know why we keep getting these grievances, and, you know, especially it says part-time, so I don't expect an answer, but that's an issue that I have.
Dr. Perry?
Yes. To briefly discuss it, a lot of it is related to the same issue. So we had two grievances on part-time employees and the terms of their employment and the length of their employment. We met a couple of times. We didn't reach an agreement. It was taken to arbitration. So, and one of the arbitrations did already take place. There were briefs that were submitted after the arbitration. We have not received the opinion yet, but, and then the other one, they're waiting for the first opinion before we go forward with the second arbitration.
Thank you. Also, I have an issue with the legal fees on 640. There's a highlight of a bunch of items. I'm not going to go through each one of them, but the one that we are being charged for subpoena resolution, I don't know why we, the residents, have to pay for that, since the mayor is the one that did the veto. I don't know why the residents are being charged, so I have a problem with that. And also, the other amount that Councilman Abdella mentioned, that $1,100 for Mr. Miyaki mentioned, I brought up. I guess I'll address that when the council discusses some of our concerns. That's it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey and Councilman Winsell? No. Okay. Next, we have Consideration of Bids. This is DPW Director Selmy, Return of Bid Bonds, Parkland Park Concession Roof Project.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I move we concur with DPW Director John Selmy, requesting all bid bonds be returned to the unsuccessful bidders for the Parkland Park Concession Roof Project, which was Council Motion 19-310 dated August 13, 2019. All bids were denied, and the project was put out for bid again, and this is outlined in Item 7A.
Support. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Reports from Mayor. This is for Star International Academy 5K Color Fun Run for Saturday, June 6, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we concur with our police chief, our fire chief, and our mayor regarding and approve the Star International Academy 5K Color Fun Run, which won't be until Saturday, June 6. They've got their request in real early, as outlined in 8A.
Support. Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Fenton Property Purchase Agreement with AIC Property Management LLC.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Piletko, respectively, requesting the city council authorize the purchase agreement from AIC Property Management LLC for the vacant lots north and south of 8052 Fenton, with the parcel numbers as attached, from the city of Dearborn Heights for the amount of $2,200 and $10,800 respectively, for a total purchase price of $13,000. And AIC Property Management LLC previously purchased 8052 Fenton through the City Action Preservation Program, otherwise known as CAP program, and the mayor is asking the city council to authorize both the mayor and the clerk to sign a purchase agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in Item 8B.
Support. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
We're purchasing these back from someone. They were our properties to begin with, right?
No, 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 no. We are selling them to AIC. One of the lots is, has the house from 8052 Fenton, which AIC already owns. That house goes into one of the lots, encroaches into it. So in other words, we're trying to have them rehab a property where they don't have the whole house. So they're getting that lot for $2,200, and then the other lot, they're basically getting the fair market value was assessed by the assessor, because it on itself, by itself, is not a buildable lot and was all kept together with this Fenton property previous to it all being forfeited with Wayne County Treasurer. So it's kind of a matter of putting it all together as one, one property, like it had been before it all ended up going through the tax process.
This way, it says, this says, "Request the city council authorize the purchase," oh, the purchase agreement. I read it incorrectly. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Bazey.
It says here that, okay, I know that they're purchasing the property, but it says that, it's confusing. It says the property was previously purchased. So what does that mean?
Are you talking about which?
802. It says, mid paragraph, it says, "AIC Property Management LLC previously purchased 8052 Fenton through the city auction preservation program."
Right.
So if they purchased it.
They're purchasing these other two vacant lots, one of which ends up having a portion of the home that's on 8052. The rest of that home is on it. So really, they can't end up doing what they have to do to rehab the property because the home, because they don't have the whole home, and moreover, that property can't be used by anyone else, because most of the home is on 8052 Fenton. So we need to put it all together.
I guess my second, I'm sorry, second question is, how much do those properties cost the city? If we have them, what did that cost the city? Just to see if that's a reasonable money that we're selling them for.
I'm not certain. Maybe Emergency Manager Gavin would know. The idea was, is that they would pay the fair market price for the one vacant lot as assessed by the assessor, and that they would end up getting the other one with a significant discount, because, to be frank, the one that we have, that we're selling for $2,200, would end up basically having a structure on it that makes it absolutely unbuildable and absolutely, I mean frankly, it doesn't have a fair market value that would make any sense in this situation. In other words, if you bought a home or bought a lot and it had part of a house on it, your title company would probably not even insure that type of, type of situation.
Councilman Abdella.
So initially on this, I had a little bit of a question. First thing, when I looked at it, and I thought, well, how did we give them, I know we gave it to him through a quitclaim deed, and I thought, how did we give them the property with 15 feet of encroachment? That sounds crazy. And I read it and realized, obviously, it's through a quitclaim deed, therefore, they're taking it as-is, whereas, so I understood that. So obviously, now we can't stop them from being able to rehab it and sell it. But I did go look at the property, in terms of being buildable. It's at the end of an apartment complex and commercial property, so it's not the most marketable, if you want to call it, of properties, as far as selling it's concerned. I can't see where somebody would want to honestly build there, especially on one lot that's not buildable, and the other one, I don't know what size it is, but it.
Yeah, I just, no, that's what I've been informed.
I've got a question, though. They do need the one that we're selling them for $2,200 to make that house on one complete property.
Right.
Why are we selling them the other one? Because I was at the CAP program when they drew their numbers, and it was explained that the other lot was not going to go with it. I was there when they all picked their properties, and that was a discussion before we began.
The idea was that otherwise, no one else is going to be able to use that property for anything. It's an unbuildable lot. So I mean, essentially, you're just going to end up having a vacant lot that the city owns and can't do anything with. It would make more sense for the new family that's going to potentially purchase 8052 Fenton to end up being able to get some value out of that and to have that used by a resident as opposed to just left open for the city to have to maintain on an ongoing basis.
Now, it doesn't, well, we don't know, you don't know what the size of that property is.
I have it here.
Do you?
Yeah, so the one on the, the one on the north end could be, okay, and the key word is could be, I'm not the one that makes the final determination, but just based on my experience, it could be buildable, because it's a 40-foot lot. That's on the north end. The one on the south end, I pulled up public records, according to this, it says it's 40 feet, but 15 feet of it is an encroachment. Therefore, it's, if we split it, if we gave them their end, which is a part of the house, obviously, and split it, then the other part is useless. So the one on the south end is completely useless. The one on the north end, based on what I'm looking at, in my experience, it could be buildable, but the key word is, would somebody purchase something and build there in the area right next to an apartment complex and a commercial building? I doubt it, but, you know, it's possible.
Well, anything's possible. Like I said, I can justify the 2,200 lot, because there is the encroachment. I agree with that, but I don't agree with the second lot going with it, because it is buildable and could be sold to somebody else to build on it.
I don't.
It's not for us to determine, somebody's not going to buy it. There's a lot of houses in our city that are on 40-foot lots.
But, Council Chair, this is not making sense, because if you're going to take 15 feet from a lot that's already 40 feet wide and put it on the one that has the house on it, then, yeah, you can have that, but now you still have an empty lot. So if you combine the two together, someone's going to be able to purchase the whole thing. Either they can build a house on it and get some tax revenue, and we won't have to maintain it, which kind of makes sense to me. So instead of just letting them both go away as an empty lot, I think we should capture the tax money while we can. Somebody wants to purchase it, they're going to be paying tax on that property, regardless if they build on it or not. And then that's, that's at least some revenue, where we would, if we owned it, we would have zero revenue, plus the cost of maintaining it, keeping the grass cut, and things of that nature. So that's my opinion.
Have we tried to sell that lot, to see if it's sellable before now? How long have we been sitting on it?
I don't know.
Does anybody have that answer?
I didn't answer that.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I think those, I went and looked at both lots.
Okay.
One of them is a 35-footer. I don't think it's 40-footer.
I just pulled up public records from Wayne County as a Realtor. I just pulled up records as a Realtor. Now, we're trying, so, because I think we get confused which lot?
That would be the south.
The north side, the middle lot, and the south side.
The middle lot has been purchased.
That's the one that has a property on it.
And that's the one that has.
The one on the north side, basically, is adjacent to an apartment building and a parking lot.
Correct.
And that's the one that's, there's encroachment on. The other one, I believe.
Okay, wait, so it's a north side?
Yeah, the south is the unbuildable vacant lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess.
At least that's the way it was described to me, is being unbuildable.
Okay, so there's a, okay, and again, I'm just basing on these records.
Councilman, these have been owned by the city for quite a while, as far as I know, and they're really, there's, there's no value except for people that live there.
And I see that.
I know that through my department, we have given lots, literally, to neighbors.
So.
This particular lot, we went to the assessor's office, and I know I worked with Chief Gavin on this one. We went to the assessor's office, we came up with the RCV value, and that's how we came up with this number.
So I did a search just to see if it was ever on the market, and if these lots were ever on the market, and they were not, as far as listed with the Realtor, based on the fact that, obviously, there's not going to be a demand for them in that spot behind an apartment complex.
That's what we thought as well. Thank you.
Councilman Winsell.
Now, the $10,000 lot, it's deemed unbuildable. Who, I mean, who made that determination?
It's unbuildable, because it has a portion of the structure from 8052 Fenton on it.
That's the one that is the $10,000 lot?
No, that's the one that's 2,200.
I'm talking about the $10,000 lot. Now, that's zoned residential, right?
Yes, but.
And it's adjacent to some commercial property, and it's potentially could be rezoned for commercial and be a lot more expensive, more valuable, right? Dave, would that be right?
I'm sorry.
Could that be rezoned? It's residential now, it's adjacent to commercial property.
I mean, obviously, to the planning and zoning board, it wouldn't be up to.
I mean, it'd be a lot more valuable then, wouldn't it?
But.
No?
Well, I.
Okay, but the only thing I want, I just want to clarify something, because I think there's been some confusion on this. You do, in the past, there's been many lots, there's many people, I shouldn't say that, there's many people that own a house that's built on two lots with two separate Sidwell, two different tax IDs. So whoever it was that owned it at one point prior to losing it, that's not that uncommon when we go to sell a property, that they have it on two separate lots, or in this case, it looks, well, it's on two lots, he may have bought the other one, I don't know, I don't know the history of it. So I just want to clarify that, that it is possible for you to own your home, Tom, and it's on two separate tax IDs, two separate lots, but your home's in the middle. That's fine if you stay in your home, but if that home, which is the home that we're speaking of, is lost to foreclosure, now it makes that second lot useless, because half of the house is being encroached on.
Right, and if I'm hearing you correctly, all three lots are 40-foot. So one of those 40-foot lots is not encroaching and vacant, right?
Okay, so obviously, I didn't measure it, but based on Wayne County public records, there's, here's, here's what I pulled up. The one on the north, let's start with the north side. The one on the north side is 40 by 145. The one in the middle, which is the one that the house, most of the property's on, is 40 by 145, and then the one on the south side, which is on the Heinz Drive part, is also 40 by 145.
So, okay.
So combined, from what I'm looking at here, I don't know what Joe's got, but just what I've got here, it'd be about 120.
Okay. Then I've got questions. I mean, one of them, does it need to be sold, because it's not necessary to complete the project?
Is it a good price, Madam Chair, or is that?
Well, so, as far as a good price, everything's based on supply and demand. Is there a demand for that? And that's why I did, for my own personal search, I did a history on it, to see if it's ever been listed, if it's ever, what price it was at, and I even did a search in the general area. It's in a, you'd have to drive it to know what I'm talking about. It's behind, if you pull into it off of Ann Arbor Trail going south, you got the apartment, you got a parking lot, and you got the apartment complex, and then on this side, you got a commercial building, and then you got these residential lots. Could somebody build there? The key word is could. Yes. Likely, well, I could just base it, based on the last 30 or 40 years, nobody has. So is there a demand? Well, based on 40 years? No. Would I build there? With due respect to whoever may build there, I wouldn't.
Well, how did the city acquire the property? There must have been a home there at one time or something.
Or closure, most likely.
But not, not recently, I presume.
No, probably was years ago.
I mean, in my real estate, I don't ever remember seeing a house on that one first lot ever, personally, but that's just visually. I've never seen one.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Isn't there a drainage sewer problem there, or what was there? It's right over here, right behind Blue Nile, correct?
It's on Ann Arbor Trail.
Ann Arbor Trail.
Yeah, not here.
Okay.
It's right next to the, it's those apartments just west of Telegraph on the south side of Ann Arbor Trail. The first apartment complex, it's like the second or third building in, west, going west off of Telegraph.
Is that a drainage sewer problem? No, not that one. I think we need more.
Too many questions in regards to this. I think we need more clarification before I can go forward with this. I don't know about the other council members.
Madam Chair, if I could say real quick, so it was a CAP home from 2018, when Bob Ankrap was here.
Right.
Gentlemen got the property, but the home extended 15 feet onto the city property.
Yeah, we all agree on that.
So that's the question. They come to me, and I talked to the mayor. So the one price is the assessed value, the 2,200, the extra lot there, we went to the assessor's office, and that's a price that, it's appraised at. So that's what we set at 10, 10-8, and then the 22. So it come out to 13,000. So he would get those three lots. The one cap home, he cannot do no work on it. It's been sitting for over a year now because it encroaches on the city property.
Well, I definitely agree with that, giving him the property that he's encroaching on.
Well, and if I may, one other point here is that all these properties per this purchase agreement have to be kept together and sold together. So the issue of redevelopment, even if that was the intent, is not something that is going to be allowed per this particular agreement. That's the way I drafted it, to make it sure that it all stayed in the cap program and was subject to the terms and conditions of the cap program.
What's a 40-foot lot for in Gibbon Heights is vacant?
So, okay, so obviously, in real estate, location, location, location. Okay, a 40-foot lot, on average, depends on a particular location, provided it's north of Ford Road, not south of Ford Road, obviously, but north of Ford Road in Gibbon Heights, on average, they're between 20, they go all the way up to about 45,000, depends on, on the location. Closer to Ford Road is going to be much, much higher demand. In that particular spot, again, I did do just general research, it's not going to be a high-demand area. Value, there's no demand, so that kind of limits as far, as far as how much value. Is it going to be $10,000? You know, nobody can set an exact price on a property because it's not a science, you know, it's just an approximation. But it's not that far off of that, only because nobody's going to want it in general. And I'm only basing nobody's going to want it based on last 30 years, nobody's wanted. And there's high demand for lots in Gibbon Heights, in North Gibbon Heights specifically, but yet nobody's ever attempted to either list it or buy it.
Yeah, they didn't list it, so they can't.
That I'm aware of, through Realty, I'm saying.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
If this is part of the cap program, now, is this the same as, as the last cap program we had, where the house has to be rehabbed and then sold? So whatever house is there has to be refabbed and resold or, and not rented? Is that, am I correct in saying that?
That is correct.
So no one's going to go rezone that piece of property to build an apartment complex?
Not, not likely, because it'll be going in as a home.
It's either not likely, it's either yes or no.
Oh.
According to the, the previous cap program is what I'm going on, this has to be rehabbed and sold.
As a single-family.
As a single-family home.
That is correct.
Okay, so there, so the answer to that question would be, it can't be rezoned to build an apartment complex or a commercial building.
Not with the original new owner, that's the point. I mean, that's why I'm, I'm making the clarification.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's good enough for me.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just for, thank you, Madam Chair, just for clarification. So this, this lot has been assessed. The value is $10,800, correct? That's the assessment.
That is what I was told by.
AIC wants to purchase it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and as far as any zoning changes, that would go before the zoning board anyway, and then come back here.
Back here, so you have the control over it.
And the council body would have to approve that final change, correct?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify in regards to councilwoman, from what I recall from the cap program, they cannot take the slot and rezon, so, so, okay, again, there's three properties. There's the first land, the house, and a third piece of land, right? They cannot go and rezone that one first piece of property. The only one that could be, if anything, would be the north side. They cannot go rezone it and, and then just cap or fix up the house with the extra shorter lot because they have to sell them as one, according to this contract.
That is correct.
Yeah. So therefore, they couldn't rezone it technically. Well, during this, the new owner, whoever the new owner would be.
The way this is set up too, they could buy that property for $10,800 and turn around and flip it because there's nothing in here stipulating that they have to combine it with the other property.
That, I think, is incorrect, and I'll find the exact language in here to.
I read that in there.
Is it?
Yeah, they, they cannot. They have to sell the property, from what I read in this contract, they have to sell the, the three pieces of property together, is what I read. Actually, I've got it right here.
Sold again, second time.
Okay, any further questions?
Wait. Here we go. Let me just, just to, just to say, to answer your question, because I had a star right by it. It's on clause number one, period three, it'd be on page two, clause D towards the top, the top paragraph roughly, section one. And it says, "Subject to this agreement, developers shall mark and sell the original Fenton property, which is the house, and additional Fenton property collectively as one property pursuant to the development agreement and the cap program." So he does have, he or she would have to sell them together.
Okay. Any further discussion?
If I might, Madam Chair, I, I think Councilman Muscat, and that was really where we just came to the practical solution, that we no longer have to maintain this property and we will end up getting tax revenue, and it just made common sense. I would hope that you would agree to this.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Councilman Fazey? Melanowski Maxwell? Wenzel? No. It passes. Next item on the agenda is under report from city officials, Treasurer Riley, Miller Canfield Legal Opinion Regarding EPA Levy.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move we receive note and file the opinion letter from Miller Canfield dated November 5, 2019, addressed to our Treasurer, John Riley, item 9A. Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I'd just like to address the administration and, and say, well, honestly, I'm disappointed in this particular case, how this thing was handled, honestly, to get this thing after the fact, and now people are going to get it on their taxes. Although for any homeowner, they're not paying any, I mean, you know, if we pay it based on what CSO money we already have, the taxpayers have already paid it, and if they pay it not on their tax bill, well, they're going to be paying it. Either way, somebody's paid, we've already paid it, or we will be paying it. But I just think this thing should have been brought to us way back when and, and charged it to the CSO instead of taking it to the taxes. But I want to clarify something. This taking it to the taxes, according to this, will only be this particular year at this particular point, and then next year, we are allowed to charge it to the CSO based on the contract.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Mayor?
Couple of things you ought to be aware of. One is that this has been going on for almost 30 years. This payment is actually less than it was last year. It's, it's near the end. Here's the other dilemma, and the auditors would like to meet with you on December 10 to explain the entire water, but this payment has, was a result of Judge Finkins because when these improvements went in, the tunnel and everything else, back in the late 1990s, it was determined by all the communities that there was no basis to pay for this. Otherwise, it would have gone on to the water rates, and we would have been paying for this in water rates. And it's not something the public wants to do. The advantage to having it on the taxes is some of us who are able to deduct on our income tax will be able to take this payment and make a deduction. In a water rate, there is no basis to make that deduction. The other thing you have to be aware of is that there's 11,400,000 CSO projects that are going to come up in the next two years. It was always the intent, and when we all met with the model, that this payment would be paid by taxes and that the 11,400, that some of that overtax money for CSOs would be allocated to the 11,400. And that's not including other demands that are going to come on the water budget, which you will, in fact, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton asked the request of John Selmy, and John put in, and it was like close to, I don't know, $15,000, $20,000 worth of projects that are coming up in the next couple of years. So there's a very serious cash flow situation, dealing with water meter replacements, which was estimated to 6 to 7 million, and then we have to replace the lead leads, which is estimated at 875,000. And it has always been, the model indicates that in order to operate the water fund, there has to be a balance of 6 million. So, and of that 6 million, 2 million is reserved for emergencies. The bottom line is, there's not sufficient amount of cash to pay for all these projects. It was always the intent of those of us who have been here for a while, that as the Finkins' debt ran out, that there might be a desire to take some of this debt and replace it because the people are already paying a certain amount of debt. I am very concerned about water rates just escalating in double digits. The council had not approved the 5% last year. That coupled with this heavy demand that is coming in the next two or three years could very well cause water rates to go up 10% or 15%, and I'm totally opposed to that. But you can't compound this problem and by not approving it. This was not some kind of overt action. It was actually a common sense decision that was made years ago and has been continued to help relieve the water rates.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah?
So although I do respect and understand where you come from, I, I see where you come from, but I disagree with you on something. Something like this, based on the fact that we handle the budget as a council, if that's the opinion of the administration, and that's the direction they want to go, and I see your thought process, I mean, I, I, I see the lining of where you lined it up, then at that particular point in April, it should have been brought to us to either agree or disagree with the direction you want to go versus getting a letter from them and saying, okay, it's not due by December, you got to put it on the tax roll. I, as I mentioned before, either way, it's going to be paid, as I also mentioned before at the previous meeting, this has been going on for multiple years, that we, as residents of Gibbon Heights, have been paying it year by year by year, and I did see the drop, I believe it was 0.1% or something like that, I did see the drop. I respect that. But if that's the direction that you want to go as a mayor or as an administration, and I respect that, then it should have been brought to us as a council to either approve or disapprove that direction, is my opinion.
Well, I understand your point, and quite frankly, I think there was a disagreement since this had been the policy for so many years, and it, no one indicated in the budget. We took that, that was, that the group concluded in the same pattern that had been done in the past. There apparently was an error, and we apologize if that's the feeling, but I still, I still think that we had to do this.
We have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Just real quick, because Mayor had mentioned this, and I thoroughly agree, Madam Chair, respectfully, we should have, as soon as possible, my opinion, a study session to discuss, because I did meet with Director Selmy on this, and I appreciate your time sitting down with me, you know, with the mandated CSO projects coming up, the 175 lead leads that we have that have to be replaced, you know, as well as the water meters we talked about, swapping those out because they're getting older and they just slow down, they don't get better. And so this is all costing us money, and then this is really, to me, when I put those on the radar, I think, wow, this is something we really should have already been planning for, and we really need to talk about funding mechanisms for these, because this is like great, huge impact on the community and on our residents, and we need to have that. I think we have a responsibility to have that conversation.
I agree.
I agree too. Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat? I just want to voice my opinion. I agree with Councilman Abdullah wholeheartedly in what he said. I think we've been bypassed, and I didn't care for it the way it was done. But again, this is not a new tax. We've been paying for this for a long time. And, you know, if it ever went on the water bill, I can guarantee you the water won't go down when this, this project gets paid for. Stuff like that never goes away. It stays on forever. And then we do have these CSO projects coming along, we'll be able to bond for them and then pay maybe one of them off, saving us a lot of money with this over capture, the CSO fund. And that's the way I'm looking at it, that it saves the taxpayers money in the long run. It's not like, you know, we've been, we're, we're going to raise our taxes, it's, it's the same thing we've been paying for since 1994. I mean, we just didn't see it or talk about it because it's always been there, and now it's something that we own, the, the Down River Sewers Disposal, and that tunnel belongs to that plant. So now all the communities have to do what they got to do.
All right, let's move forward here. With that mentioned, now we need to go to the Assessor Foucault EPA mileage approval.
Madam Chair, we have to concur with this one.
I'm sorry. Which is an act, it's an, it's no action, but we still, I'm sorry, we do have to vote. Yes, because there's a motion on the floor in support, but it's a received note and file, which is a non-action. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Assessor Foucault, I'm sorry, I probably mispronounced it, EPA mileage approval. This was tabled from October 22, 2019 meeting, so at this point, I do need a motion to take it from the table and put it back on the agenda.
So move, Madam Chair.
Support. Supported by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah? I mean, I'm sorry, Fazey?
I still have a problem with this here, as discussed at the last meeting. This was, should have been brought to us. The mayor had this back in April, he's a CPA, I think he should have known better. We should have had it before the last budget meeting. It wasn't brought up, so there's, this does not make sense to me. If, if we've been paying on it for all these years, then it should have been brought before the budget meeting, that's my problem. And the water rates, they keep saying, increasing the water rates, some residents are getting double, triple, and quadruple of the rates, and they've been using the same usage, so I don't, I don't know what the problem is even with that, with increasing water rates without having to increase their usage. And, you know, like I mentioned before, senior citizens having same issues, paying excessive water rates, and more than, like I said, more than double, sometimes quadruple, so I do have an issue with this resolution.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Mayor?
If I might, because I brought this with me. On March 2019, plant grant presented to this body, a study, and included in there was this particular payment.
Councilman Coniston?
Just one of our, I think we have to move to take it off the table first.
Yeah, I was going to say, on order, because it's still off the table, you can't make comments until it's brought back, correct?
Right.
So we should vote before we have the discussions, I'm sorry.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Now we can discuss it.
Yes.
It's back on the table. Any further discussion?
Somebody's got to move to.
I move to city council approve Mr. Foucault's levy as outlined.
Foucault's levy, yeah.
In 9B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Now, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Just for future dates, I, I'd like to have something like this presented to us ahead of time, just so that we're all on the same page, because it, obviously, it's for those two main bodies running the city right now, obviously, the mayors and the council, and so that we're all on the same page for future purposes, I think it should be brought to us, so that we're, us and yourselves are on the same page and in agreement, please.
Senator Riley?
I promise you that.
I spoke with Assessor Foucault today, and he asked if the motion maker could also include authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign the L4029 form that needs to be filed with Wayne County.
So done.
Thank you.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Fazey is opposed. Councilman Wenzel is opposed. Next item on the agenda, assessor's office, request for consideration of street vacation.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Kimberly, coroner of the assessor's office, and Clayton Robinson has submitted a request for a street vacation for the unpaved Daniels Off of Powers, also referred to as the unpaved road right-of-way, platted between lots 59, 60, 77, and 78 of Van Born Little Farm subdivision. This particular lot is 60 by 245. There's an attached plant map. And then there's the following documentation. They are requesting that the council approves to hold a public hearing as outlined in item 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
He was first.
Councilman Abdella?
Well, I spoke with our Assessor, Tony Fuko, on this, and also, you know, looked it up and did some research on it. This is basically a continuation of a road that had been started and never finished. And the people right next door, they have a commercial property right off of Inkster there, and they'd like to take over that particular property and create a parking lot. I had some concerns here because it is a continuation of a road. It's 60 foot by 245 foot, and I had some concerns about giving up something like that for free. One of the advantages we would have, of course, is they would be able to maintain it. One of the other advantages is now we'd be able to bring in some tax money, which is good. But one of the things that we will give up is our right to be able to continue right-of-way. Now, the question will always come up, like it did in my head, are we going to need a right-of-way in that particular area? As, as it stands based on history, no. But that particular area is close to the incinerator, and one day, there may be some development. We may be doing retention pond for the creek. I don't know. It's right next to the creek, and I'm glad there's a public hearing on this where, of course, the public and the neighbors can come in and say what they feel about this. But I did have some reservations on this, just, just to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Councilman Bazey is next. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Go ahead.
I just need a clarification on this one here for the title. It says request for consideration. So if we vote on this, we're, we're voting on approving to hold a public hearing, correct?
Yes, it should make that clear in your motion, that that's, because it does say consideration of street vacation. It should be included in the motion that it is only to schedule a public hearing.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
It was mentioned already.
Did you also have anything to say?
Well, yeah, so, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. So, yes, this is only, the motion should already, only be to request approving a public hearing. This is not actually to vacate it at this point, correct? And my question is, and I agree with Councilman Abdella, I mean, there's some potential, you know, activity that's going to possibly happen there. We know that we have the timeline for the funding mechanism, hopefully with all the players coming in place for the Ecorse Creek flooding project. And then that's, you know, going to be impactful in that area. But I guess my question was, looking over the forms, like approval of the fire department, there's no response. Approval from DPW, no response. Looks like building departments signed off. I'm, I'm just concerned because I don't necessarily see the responses that I'd like to see with this property and those departments signing off on them. I mean, I, I mean, I know this is just for a hearing, but I think that's really important that we have that from our building departments.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have that for you at the time of your public hearing. Because it was just a public hearing, we didn't, but not everybody got a chance to respond.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
Once it goes to a public hearing, it does come back to us, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to another chance. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is from Chief of Staff Laslow, watch guard fire boxes purchase and payment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
I move that we concur with the administration and approve the purchase of the listed watch guard fire boxes for a total price not to exceed $19,120 and authorize payment upon successful delivery as outlined in 9D. And I know Tarek Ishmael from Dearborn, Dearborn Heights IT is here, if anybody has any questions.
Okay.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdella. Is there any discussion? Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda.
You could only talk this out of there.
Great job.
Exercise.
You can't use your eyes to communicate.
Okay, next item on the agenda is DPW Director Selmy, 2019, 2020, street repair program, hard rock contract amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve to amend the current hard rock concrete contract as presented in the enclosed change order for $3,218,000. Approve a construction engineering bid for Wade Trim Associates in the amount of $274,000 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the change order on behalf of the city as outlined in 9E.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel?
Director, is this the same company that did the Annapolis project?
Yes, they did Annapolis this year. They did Fenton and George out here. They did a repair on Haas this year.
Okay, they did really good work.
That's, this is my first year working with them personally, and they do outstanding work. I reached out to some other communities, which I included in the packet. City of Levonia does a lot of paving with them, and I got recommendations for them. I wanted to show the council that we're not the only ones that do contract amendments from time to time, especially when you have a good contractor, and that they're willing to hold their 19 prices going into the 20 paving season.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
So I spoke with Director Selmy, and although reading this, I'm, I'm in favor of this, and I get it, and we have a particular contractor that you work with on a regular basis, doing a good job, residents are happy, Levonia's happy, you're happy, everybody's happy. I, I get all that, and I think it's all good. At the same time, though, just to do our due diligence, and I get where Wade Trim mentioned that this was below or at current industry costs. So if we use the number below, and that's great, we're saving the residents some money, and we're getting a good deal with a great contractor. Love it. But if it's at current, because remember, the key word is or. But if it's at current industry costs with an amount of 3.2 million, and again, all the boxes were there. I mean, everything seemed to, there was nothing that gave me any type of indication that this should be turned down. But for future purposes, I would still like to consider other bids favoring the contractor we typically work with that has done a good job. Because to me, if we're going to save hypothetically a couple thousand dollars or a few thousand dollars, but with a contractor that's unknown, and we have a known, you know, entity here that does a great job, I would go with the known entity. But just so that we're not throwing money away, I'd like to, for the future purposes, I'd like to have that considered.
And I think on the next agenda item, that kind of shows that, because there's a change order, change order for reduction in the contract from this year.
Right, for 200 and some thousand.
To reduce that amount, so.
Correct.
I mean, this number here is a placeholder, worst case, you know, top end number, quantities probably less, and it'll be very similar for this year's project.
And I've always liked the change orders. They've been good.
Yeah, let's move forward.
Long they go down.
Is there any further discussion?
That's what they've been doing.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy, 2019, I'm sorry, 2019, street repair program for Annapolis, Fenton, and George, change order number one approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve the change order number one prepared by Wade Trim. Change order number one shows a decrease of $246,314.68 to the contract value as outlined in 9F.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is DPW Director Selmy, water department office equipment purchase.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Selmy. We had MIDL contract, I'm sorry, contact change for a previously approved Pitney Bowes office equipment. He is asking for an approval of an increase of $661.02 for the mail machine. Also, approval for the supporting table and finishing stacker, as these were not included in our original approval, in the amount of 1,818. And this is outlined in item 9G.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
I, you know, we, we did this a few weeks ago. I started thinking, didn't we buy one of these things here a year ago? I'm pretty sure we bought something similar to this a year ago. And, so what happened to that?
I don't, I don't know what you're, bought what? I'm not sure what you're.
Bought a, bought a, a mail machine to put everything.
My understanding of the mail machines you had are.
It was 2014, I think, or 15 was the time it was purchased.
I thought we did one last year.
I don't remember it.
And, I'm going to have to look that up.
It's only one mail room.
Yeah, but I, I remember us purchasing something for the mail room to put things in the envelope and maybe our, our.
Treasurer.
Our treasurer can, can comment on this.
That, that was purchased about four years back. Vince Macari was still the controller, and he had put it in. But I, I mean, we occasionally use that machine when we send out like some delinquent letters. It's not working well. So it's, it's not a good quality piece of equipment. It's broken down all the time. It's, it's just not efficient. It, it works, but then it, you know, it stops, you know, they have to call in service. Things are not getting done in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
So this, this will only be used for the water department, is that correct?
The printer and the mailing machine, that is correct. That's for utility bills.
Okay, so some printers, I mean, I know the ones that we have at work, there's, their password protected, so that particular department can use it only for that particular department.
So, yeah, so the, so the network would only allow people with access to that, we will only allow access to that printer from that department.
So nobody can use it in any other department but the water department?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Selmy, approval to dispose of used equipment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
I move we concur with our DPW Director John Selmy and approve the disposal of the used equipment, lawn mowers, and other items to be auctioned off as outlined in 9H.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
So for the auction, are we using the same one the state uses?
We're, we're using somebody that does a lot of municipal auctions throughout the state. You have made prior approvals for stuff to be auctioned, so we have everything together. We wanted to lump these two mowers in there too and just do a bulk sale.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase radio's AFG regional grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve and grant permission to our Fire Chief, David Brogan, to purchase the radio equipment from Motorola, and this is with AFG grant money funding. It's a regional grant. The total amount is $2,122,827. Did I get that right? Yeah. Payable upon receipt. It should be noted that we are receiving equipment totaling $66,484, and our match is going to be $5,540. And this is a grant shared among 16 communities as outlined in 9I.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdella. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, is it discussion? Or is it discussing the question?
Yeah, discussing, yeah, yeah, just a quick question. Was our grant writer the one that was involved with this specifically?
Yeah, she's the one that wrote the grant for the whole area.
Very good.
She's good.
Oh, yeah, she's really good.
She's a keeper, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, permission to make purchases via MEDC grant.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council authorize Chief Brogan to utilize the MEDC grant to purchase two chainsaws, four diming saw blades, four dry suits, and two ventilation PPV fans as outlined in 9J.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Mus, I'm sorry, Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Deputy Chief Battalow, purchase of portable CAFS units.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that council concur with Deputy Chief Battalow to purchase two portable compressed air foam systems as outlined in 9K.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm sorry, Council Chair. It wasn't written in there, but it should say payable upon receipt as well in that.
Yeah, so, so be a payable upon receipt.
Support, who supported?
I'll support it.
Councilman Bazey? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Parks and Recreation Director Haddit, Park and Recreation Commission appointment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
I move we concur with Director of Parks and Recreation, Brian Haddit. There are currently two openings on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they were created by the resignation of two, John Dropella and Kelly Forensic, which we appreciate their service. And he'd like to submit the Honorable City Council for consideration, one of these vacancies, Marilyn Summers. And Marilyn is, has, I'm sorry, Marilyn now has more time to be able to commit to this. She was on there previously. And he's recommending that Marilyn, a 5406 hip, be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission as outlined in item 9L.
Support. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Coniston, amendment to the Senior Alliance Incorporated Fiscal Years 2020 to 2022. This is the contract for services to the aging, supported by federal and state funds.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve the Senior Alliance contract for fiscal years 2020 through 2022 and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract as outlined in 9M.
Okay.
Excuse me, of the amendment.
It's an amended contract.
The amendment contract, amended contract, excuse me.
Okay.
As outlined in 9M.
Support. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Voloturni, Motorola service agreement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move city council concur with Police Chief Voloturni. And our quarterly service agreement with Motorola for September 1, 2019 through November 30 of 2019 is due. Renewing agreement is essential for our police and fire dispatching services. I move that you also authorize the mayor, Paletko, to sign the Motorola service agreement for the period September 1, 2019 through November 30, 2019, for a cost of $15,338.19.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is Council Chairwoman Melonowski Maxwell. This is a zoning board of appeals appointments.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
I move that we concur with Council Chair Denise Melonowski Maxwell. Approval requested to appoint Ollie Berry and Nadia Fadlala to the Zoning Board of Appeals, terms expiring May 2022. These appointments would fill the expired terms on May 2019 of Larry Zara and Richard Coogan. Per Councilman Abdella, communication dated November 5, 2019 is outlined in item 9O.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, next item on the agenda is under ordinances and resolutions. We have Seacross Wardle, second reading of proposed ordinance H-19-07. This is amendment to Chapter 37, Small Cell Wireless Communication Facilities.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to consider read for the second time, proposed ordinance H-19-07, and effective upon publication as 11A outlined.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I still oppose, I'd be voting no on this, and the reason why is I don't think we've done enough homework before we introduce this ordinance. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, a lot of cities, or few cities, they're actually opposing the state, and they've done their homework, much bigger than Dearborn Heights. So I don't know why we're introducing this ordinance.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Mr. Miyaki, by adopting this ordinance, does that give us less chance of fighting this at all, or?
This is, and I would have to say that this gives us the only chance that we have to actually be able to regulate in this area. And in terms of the homework that has been done, Mr. Roberts and his firm have done a great deal of work and have a great deal of expertise in this area. And if we're going to have any ability to end up regulating anything, we have to have an ordinance in place, and this would be the ordinance to do it. And I know that they did so with the idea of aggressively protecting the city and the residents' interests with regard to this, so, and still being within compliance with the law. So I hope that answers your question, Councilman.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair, I know, you know, reading the ordinance, it doesn't stop them from putting antennas wherever they want, except like by schools or churches or something like that. I mean, in all residential areas, it's fair game.
Right. Unfortunately, we have to live within the parameters of state and federal law. And basically, they've established the extent to which we can actually regulate in this particular area. So that's the best that we can do, at least at this time.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just, I can't accept that. I mean, I don't want to accept something and say further down the way, we're going to fight it, but we accepted it. So I'm going to vote no on this also.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Well, yeah, Seacross Wardle represents Dearborn Heights and several other cities, and this isn't, but again, by, it has the words 5G, but it doesn't mean we support 5G. This is an area that's mainly preempted by state and federal laws, Mark Roberts and the other attorney from his firm explained. But this actually gives us, is carefully drafted, you know, whatever control we could have under the current state and federal law.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? At this point, we'll take a vote on it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Melonowski Maxwell? No. Councilman Abdella?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
No.
Councilman Wenzel?
No.
Okay, it's failed. Next item on the agenda is business license renewals for Walker Speakeasy, which is located at 8701 North Beach Daily and Mexican Fiesta, located at 24310 Ford Road. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Move to approve the business license renewal applications as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Abdella opposes it. Next item on the agenda is permanent traffic control device T-279, no parking, standing, stopping, school days only, east side of Highview Street.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the request for traffic control device as outlined in 13B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Along the same lines of this, I know we did a study on Richardson by the Berwin Senior Center. We need to do something about that. I was walking across the street there last week. People just give you the finger when you tell them to slow down. They're doing 45 miles an hour through there, and there's two white lines that people walk across the street. People don't pay attention to those white lines. We need a stop sign out there in both directions. My God, this is our city. Why can't we just put a stop sign there? We've, people have complained about it, residents have complained about it, I've complained about it, and a senior's going to get hit by a car there one day. So I'm, you know, begging that we find some way to put another stop sign there in front of the Berwin Senior Center.
I concur with that.
This is crazy. I mean, you go by there, and it's just not young kids. It's older people too, because there's, it's a big, long stretch. It's a speedway.
Councilman, I also was at the polls there on election day, and I watched a Mustang, an older model, speed past there and then blow through the stop sign at the corner. It gave it the gas.
It's an everyday thing. You could put one of those things on there, tell you how fast you're going. People see them, and they just slow down.
Chief Volotorni, would you like to?
Well, I'm just going to let you know that I'll get it on the next council agenda.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? Can all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I'm going to open up to comments from council members. I will begin with, this is Dearborn Heights 14th Annual Veterans Week, from November 11 to November 17. The following businesses in our city will be offering items to veterans. Al Shalal Restaurant will give you a free item. Barista Cafe will give you a free item. Divine Dessert also give you a free item. Greenland Market, a free item. Hair Connection at the South End gives free haircuts. You need to call for appointment Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday only, and the number to call is 313-563-3505. Papaya Fruit Market will give you a free item. Ram's Horn at the North End will give you a free item. Randy's Bar and Grill will give you a free handy mac burger, Randy Mac Burger and fries. Roberto's Bakery will give you a free item. Saja's Bakery will give you a free item, and Studs Hardware at the South End will also give you a free item. I encourage our vets to visit these establishments this week. Councilman Wenzel.
Well said. Yesterday was Veterans Day, and as I do at most of the meetings, I'd like all the veterans in the audience to stand up, please, including Councilman Bazey. It's also the 244th birthday of the Marine Corps and the 100th birthday of the American Legion. I'd like to also thank our clerk for election well done. Everything went very smooth. Also, the new appointee to the Parks and Recreation Department, Marilyn Summers, is in the audience here. And Marilyn has probably over 30 years on the District 7 Dads Club Board of Directors, well experienced, and a very good appointment. I'd also ask the chair to put together a charter review panel.
I agree with you.
I think we should do that the next, for the next couple of meetings, because there's so many questions. And also, a motion was made back in April, I believe it was, for a monthly update on the golf course, and it already is six months later, and we still haven't gotten one update on the golf course. I'm a little upset about that. I think that's it.
All right. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And of course, echo what everyone has said about Veterans Day. I think every day we should thank our veterans and honor them for their service and commitment to our country. And what I also would like to do with all the snow we had, which was a little unexpected to get so much snow so quickly, I have a lot of people to thank, and I'm not going to name them off because there's too many, but I did a call of action today because we had so many of our elderly and disabled residents, including veterans, that had signed up for assistance removing snow. And I tell you this morning, I'm going to be really quite honest with you, I was in tears, because there's no way we could have done it. We couldn't have done it. It just wasn't going to happen. And I will tell you, as a community, you all came through. And you know who you are, and I want to thank every one of you. I mean, well over 70, 75 homes were completed, and they're still out there right now clearing these sidewalks for people. And that, I tell you, that's what community looks like, and I am honored to work with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Councilman Bazey?
I have actually two questions. One regarding, I've gotten few concerns, questions from the residents regarding the chiefs, the, why we're going through so many chiefs in just one election year, or one term, four years, we've gone through, we've got to be gone through four police chiefs.
Three.
No, no.
There'll be three.
Well, we have the retired chief governor.
It'll be four with us.
We'll be, we'll have four.
The fourth? I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I mean.
Oh, because you'll get another one. Yeah, I see what you're saying. You're trying to anticipate the fourth.
And so some of the concerns, I mean, the residents are the ones that actually brought it to my attention. They want to know why. Is it because, I guess, one, is it because the pay between a deputy and a chief pay is about a thousand, I'm sorry, $10,000 and few hundred dollar pay bump from the two? And I guess another question, would they, if they're retired, would they be getting the retirement pay as a chief or from the deputy chief? I mean, one of the things as a veteran and a military, if you get, if you pick up a rank, you have to maintain in that rank for three years before you're able to draw pension for that rank. So that's one of the questions, I guess, the mayor, I'm sure, I don't know if the chief or the mayor.
Someone like to answer that?
I mean, out of respect for the chiefs, you know, you guys are doing outstanding job. It's just something that was brought up, and residents are, the ones that brought it to my attention, they're concerned if it's a money issue, that we're just doing it just for the money?
Let me answer your question.
Councilman Bazey, I came before this council four years ago, approximately three years ago, with a succession plan for the city that we had agreed with our unions because of the lack of applicants that we had in the police department and trying to staff our police department. The pay issues are a non-issue. Those issues were set when our pensions were calculated before we got into the drop. So there is no pay issue as far as what our pensions, our pensions were calculated 2011, and there is no change other than the increase of salary going to the different rank.
If I might add, we worked very closely with the unions, and we knew that as a result, there's a very strange oddity that happened. When we became a city, we hired a lot of people. So we go through this every 25-year cycle, and we were going through it again. And we worked with the unions, and they worked with us, to keep skilled individuals, the people that have been chief and are currently, and to be the chief, are senior members, and so that expertise and continuity would continue. And they're working to bring expertise up so that we have these positions in the command officers filled by people. But quite frankly, in some of the lower levels of command, we have what, people that have three, four years of experience, and that was our concern. It was really to do, to have a stable change, and there was, and we appreciated the Command Police Officers Union working with us in accomplishing this.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
This was going to be part of my goodbye speech for the next session. Not the next chief, but the open-mic session. Just talking about what we've accomplished, so we had the foresight four years ago to know that we were going to be losing a bunch of command officers and supervisors. And just some numbers, we had 26 command supervisors, command and supervisors in the union. We lost over half of them. We promoted, tested and promoted 16 of them. We have command officers, lieutenants, that are all, have been scheduled to go through staff command training. We have one captain who went to the FBI National Academy. It's a 10-week course. It's a great course. We could talk more about it later. But we anticipated these problems. We met them head-on. We promoted a bunch of sergeants. We're training those guys up. So there isn't going to be a big shakeup at the police department. And that was the whole intent of this, you know, our foresight four years ago. And then we worked together for and against the administration, trying to work out a good contract. It came before the honorable body. And so this was just something that, I am going out at the top of the game, knowing that the city's going to be taken care of when I leave. And that was my goal. In 24 months, we've hired and retained 20 new officers, and 40% of those are people, how do I want to say this, not white or male. So it's, we have a great minority boost into our department. And I think that's important for our community to understand, and it's something that we've been working at recruiting and driving for and striving to make our department more diverse and make the city more diverse. So, you know, we're doing a lot. We're concerned about police officer health and wellness. For the month of November, it used to be No Shave November. November, probably December, will be No Shave November at the police department. And in the prior years, we've donated to the seniors, bought hats and gloves for children, gifts. This one, we're kind of being selfish, and we're focusing on police officer health and wellness, dealing with officer suicide. So we're supporting a program going forward, a national program, trying to send somebody to Washington DC for this group. So of all the good stuff you hear on Facebook about the police officers, the bad stuff you hear, we're still out here, we're doing our jobs no matter what everybody's saying.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I am. Hey, this is my last council meeting, so I'm going to do something. I dropped the mic.
And I do sympathize with.
I thought you were going to sing. Oh, please, you dropped it.
Too bad that Sullivan ain't around.
If we might, let's give a round of applause. He's been a great chief.
I know what you mean. I mean, we have that 22 a day with veterans, so.
Yeah, thank you.
And I am 110% for our police officers and also our firefighters. I mean, that's, one is too many.
Okay.
Last question, one, I need to find out, since we have been having charges by the attorney on double-dipping that one ordinance, towards the end of December, from my understanding, we'll only have just the mayor on that ordinance. So are we going to cancel it, since, you know, we're still a part-time city? You know, we open four days a week. You know, the pay is, was it almost $90,000 for the mayor? And I believe from what I read is about $2,700 additional for that ordinance a month. So I don't know what the other council members, you know, I think it's not beneficial for the residents since we're doing budget. I don't know why we're having an ordinance to pay additional for double-dipping since, you know, the salary for that position is $90,000 for four days, and now an additional $2,700 a month, according to the one email that I received.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Two things. First thing, maybe we should have a study session on this so we can be fully aware of what Councilman Bazey is telling us. I think it would be beneficial to all of us, and so we can all think it out carefully. That's one. Number two, I want to talk about ordinance H-19-08. That's the unsolicited materials being delivered. I know I sent a letter, an email through to council chair to our corporation council about a letter to be sent to the appropriate news agencies that helped deliver that. And I guess he would prefer it coming from the ordinance director. I don't know if one's been sent out yet, but as of this past Sunday, they're still delivering those newspapers. And it's a violation of our ordinance. They need to be charged for each individual paper they're delivering. But I don't know how well that'll hold up in court if nobody told them about it. So I'm begging someone to do something about it. We worked long and hard for a few years on this ordinance, and it finally happened. It came through. So I don't want to let it go. I don't want to see anymore of these newspapers littering our streets anymore. So I don't know who's going to give the direction to write a letter. If it's Mr. Miyaki, if it's the mayor, whoever it is, please give the direction to have it sent out immediately. It needs to be sent out like yesterday.
If the mayor wants me to send the letter, I'll send the letter.
You take direction from council and the mayor.
I'm asking him to do it.
Yeah, I know that, but the email that I received from him says that he's got to go through you. I remember Marge Horvath telling me, if you want the attorney to do something, tell him to do it. I shouldn't have to go through anybody. I mean, as a consensus of the council, this ordinance was legally passed 7-0. It was read twice, voted on it, 7-0. That should have been enough of a consensus to send a letter out. This is my, this is the problem I have. And then it says that you have to do it through the mayor. I don't understand that at all. And I'm upset about it because it's littering. I don't care how you want to look at it, it's been going on for years, and it needs to come to a stop immediately.
Well, Councilman, if you could provide me with a copy of one of those editions of the papers so that I can try to make sure I track it to the right source? Do you have a?
I don't have a.
They're not delivered in my neighborhood, so I.
I don't have a copy.
Free Press and News.
Detroit Free Press and Detroit News, that's who sends it out. Madam Chair.
Well, they oftentimes will end up saying that they don't.
I'm sorry. So just thought process. Since we don't know 100, okay, I mean, just based on not knowing 100%, there's no loss in sending it to the Times Herald, Press and Guide, Detroit News, and Free Press. Send a letter, send it to all of them. And if they're not breaking the law, the current law, then they got nothing to worry about. If they are breaking the law, now they know about it.
Well, I also want to make sure that we have it from the one that you specifically sang.
Well, it comes from Free Press and News, I mean, is one I remember.
It will also put future papers on notice, too, that they can't do it. If they're not currently doing it, in the future, they will know that it's not to be done.
I just don't understand what the big deal is. I mean, the select newspaper is the same thing that is delivered on the Sunday newspaper to people who want the newspaper, okay? to people who want the newspaper, okay? Or Saturday newspaper, excuse me. It's just the advertisements that they're putting out there. Those are coming from the Detroit newspapers. And at one time, they even said, "Hey, call this number if you don't want them." So, I mean, that's available online. I mean, I'll go find one for you if you want, but I got no issue with it.
If you know where, because when my mother was alive, she lived close to your neighborhood, and we would regularly get them in the street by her place. I don't get them in my neighborhood. So it might be helpful, just so that I can also potentially send it to whoever's distributing, as well as whoever is publishing. So that's kind of.
I might have one in my trash. I'll look.
If you have something and you see an address on it, you could just send me an email so that I, with the address.
It is Free Press and News. I mean, that's what I always see.
I will look.
You still need to put the Free Press and News and the other papers on notice for future references anyways.
See, they used to have an attorney, and I don't know if he's still there, which is Herschel Fink, who I used to end up dealing with. It's one thing to send a letter to a large organization, it's another thing to send it to someone who's going to actually do something other than.
And that's understandable, but I think if you look close enough, you'll find those newspapers in your neighborhood. It's not just on your street, but around in your subdivision, you will see them. They're everywhere. I mean, everywhere.
All right. At this point, is there any further comment?
On that note, I have different.
Ma'am Chair.
Mayor.
Just want to let, alert everybody that the Parks and Recreation Department will be presenting the annual tree lighting, but we've moved the location. It will be at Warren Valley Golf Course, and it will be Tuesday, December 3, 2019. We'll have cookie decorations, hot cocoa, face painting, and some lucky child will have an opportunity to help Santa light the tree. Registration for drawing, for lighting the tree will begin at 6:30. It's open to children, 5 to 12, and parents and guardians, bring your cameras, so that you can get a picture with Santa and your kids. So it's a free event for everybody, and we're trying a new location, so, and everybody in the council and all the elect officials are obviously invited.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Conston.
We had our Kiwanis, the Dearborn Area Kiwanis Veterans Dinner, November 6. Thanks to Mark and Carol Slater, for again setting it up. Wayne County Circuit Court Judge Ulysses Boykin was the speaker. He's a Harvard Law School graduate and also a veteran, and he talked quite a bit, and it was actually a very interesting talk. And then I'd also like to congratulate Marilyn Summers for again serving on the Recreation Commission. She's a South Ender and was on before, she was here but just left, but she does good work.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilman Adella.
It's really more of a question for Director John Selmy, if you don't mind. So first of all, I want to start with this. You're doing not a great job, you're doing even above a great job. Great, great, great job. So I've been consistently happy with any of the services you've been providing, including whenever I call on you for something, you guys are right on it. So great job for DPW. But just so that a lot of residents are a little bit more aware as far as the snow shoveling of the streets, snow plowing, I should say. Consistently, I'm getting, you know, these calls, "Oh, they haven't done it on this street, they haven't done it on that street." I say, "Well, I'm not the snowplow guy." Can you give us a general outline as far as what the direction that we have been going with, what the direction that we will continue to go with, what needs you need as a department, so that we can work on it as a council, to provide you to have more of it done faster? Because I'm getting, including a comment today, and they start mentioning different cities, and you know, "I can't believe this city does it, and you guys don't do it." And I hear it on a regular basis, and this is no reflection on the job that you guys are doing, because you guys are doing a great job. But just so that a lot of the residents know, just a general outline of what the process is that you have for this upcoming winter.
So yeah, so this obviously is my first snow event here in Dearborn Heights. Record snow in early November, so kind of unheard of. So today, we started yesterday at 3 o'clock in the morning, called a snow emergency, as far as the routes and how they're routed and stuff like that. I certainly will take a look at it, evaluate it as needed. Last Thursday, went to a seminar to look at some GPS type of instruments that you put on the vehicles, so you can track the vehicles, see where they're plowing, where they're plowing, speed, those, all those types of things. It was developed on the west side of the state for Kent County. It's in cooperation with Verizon and the software company. It's very affordable, it'd be a great thing for our street sweepers, for our snowplows, because people say, "Hey, you never come down our street."
Right.
But we can say, "Yeah, we can, because here's the data," you know? So some of those things, I'm starting to look at. Certainly, equipment's a challenge. We had four pieces of equipment that were down today. You know, we started out in good shape, but, you know, older equipment, so, you know, wear and tear on that equipment. You know, we have started to purchase new equipment. This council's approved a bunch of that this past spring and summer. Hopefully, it'll be taking delivery of some of that, hopefully, before the end of the year. So everything's open, you know, it needs to be reevaluated, how it's done, you know? Certainly, you prioritize your main roads, right? Your major roads, you know, your big east-west, north-south streets, your police stations, your fire stations, around your schools, those are always a priority, right? Residential neighborhoods are secondary, or sometimes third. So people don't understand, there's a lot more going on than just plowing your residential street, right?
And I get that. So hypothetically, there's five inches of snow, let's pretend tomorrow morning. What is the guideline that you use as far as when every street should be done by?
That's a good question.
Within how long?
I mean, in all honesty, I can't answer that. I haven't been here. This is my first snow.
Okay, I respect that, then.
I can tell you in my prior place, where you were a township, the expectation it would be done within 24 hours.
Okay, because sometimes it's not happening here in past years, so, and I trust your judgment, I know you're gonna put together a good plan. If you haven't put together the perfect plan as of yet, I respect that, and we'll wait for that. But whatever equipment you need, I'm all in favor of giving it to you, because city services is what it's all about, and that's what the residents look for.
And one thing that I may add, that you had sent me a text message.
A text message from somebody, yeah.
So back in 95, you had double the number of employees, you had double the equipment. So sure, things got done twice as fast, right? We're 50% less across the board with that, right? So the expectation is high, you know, and we certainly want to try to meet that expectation, but when it snows for 16 hours straight, you're not going to get it cleaned up in eight hours. I don't, you know, unless you've got a truck for every street, and I don't know any community that has.
Put together a game plan, come to us with budget. I'm all in favor of giving you guys whatever you guys need, to make sure we provide great customer service, which I know you always have given.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the council members? At this time, I will open up to public announcements, community announcements. You have a five-minute limit, please step up to the microphone.
I just want to take a minute in regards to Chief Dan. You know, he's put in over 31 years with the city, and November 21, they're gonna have a changing of the guard. Dan will retire. And Mike Petrie, we didn't introduce him in the back. You guys know Mike over the years. He'll become the police chief. But just in regards to Dan. Mike's got a lot of time on, too. So just in regards to Dan, when I was chief, he was a deputy chief, and when you needed something done, you went to Dan, and he would do it. He's a quiet guy, you never know what he's gonna say, you see by his actions up here sometimes.
I thought he was gonna do something else.
You know, from being a neighbor of mine 30-some years ago, and watching his family grow up in Dan, in that. Dan has put in a lot of time with the city. As department heads, they can all vouch. When we're in a meeting, you never know what Dan's gonna say. But a good guy, and I just want to thank him for his years of service, like we said, over 31 years. And we're in good hands, like Dan said, with Mike coming up, and then whoever takes over after them. So I just want to thank Dan again for all his support of me over the years, and for his dedication to the community.
That's gonna standing ovation.
You've got two standing ovations, he only got one.
So he's bigger than Lee, so.
Any other public announcements? I'm sorry, community announcements. At this point, we will open it up to public comment from the residents or anybody in the audience. You have three minutes. Come to the microphone. All right. What? Oh, my God.
Oh, one more.
Oh, almost.
Sam, Dearborn Heights. Good evening, everybody. Ma'am Chair, if you remember, three weeks ago, your honorable body along with other council members requested documentation from administration. It's been three weeks now, and unfortunately, I've checked with few council members, they have not received nothing from nobody. Any answer?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muske.
I met with Executive Assistant Christina Lazlo last week, on Thursday, I believe it was. And she's preparing documents for me for what I had asked for. So I was not doing anything or saying anything till I received these documents, to go through them. So that's what I can tell you right at this present time. I have not gotten my hands on the documents, but I'm assured that we're all going to be getting, because I asked for all the council people to receive them. And she agreed. I saw a few emails, and I have a few, but I have them at home. I didn't want to distribute them out till I got all of the paperwork first.
I appreciate that, Ray. I mean, you know, we all trust you, that's why you got re-elected.
Thank you.
And, but what I do hope, she will not give you that information, as she's been going around and telling rumors to some other council members, wondering, "What do I have to do with this grant? I did not own a house, I used to live with my father-in-law."
Okay, well.
So technically, if this is the information she's giving out to council members, I don't trust what kind of information she's gonna give you after that.
Well, I asked for a certain documents. I will wait to see if I get them, and then once we get them, we'll go through them, and everybody, it'll be made public.
Once again, we trust you, and I personally trust you, and I really thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more thing.
Sure.
We had a conversation, Mr. Abdullah, I, and some experts today, about appraisals, and especially my particular houses. I'm wondering if Mr. Abdullah, could you please explain for the mayor and Mr. Miyake, what was the advice that was given?
Yeah. So I got a call from Mr. Hussein, and he contacted me, it was about two, three weeks ago, or something like that, in regards to the appraisals. And I said, "I'm not gonna comment myself personally on these appraisals until, I'd like to get a third-party appraiser to take a look at these." And I said, "Do you have the appraisals?" Because this was, this issue came up originally way back when we purchased the homes. It was two years ago, whatever. So I said, "Do you have the appraisal still?" He said, "Yes, I do." I said, "Okay, great, send it to me, I'll take a look at them, and then I'll get an appraiser to take a look at them for us." I got ahold of an appraiser that I trust, that's very competent, and he looked at them. And just for clarification, the appraisals that we were looking at on his home, and then there was another home on Hanover also, that were done by the first appraiser, the first appraiser. And since it's public record, I'll just say it was raftery. But what I understood, the appraisal that we went with was a second appraisal by Jemana Judy. But nevertheless, from what I was told by Mr. Hussein, the appraisals that he had asked for through a FOIA, these were the appraisals that he was given. Is that correct?
Correct.
And based on that, that's all he's got to be able to give to me, to be able to look at with this particular appraiser. So we talked with him today, honestly, almost across the board, based on what I seen, and definitely based on his expert opinion. There was a lot of things that are just not done properly, no Ts were crossed, no Is were dotted, and it was sloppy, to say the least. So he mentioned the value is in the general ballpark, but nevertheless, when an appraisal is turned in, I'll tell you, based on my real estate business, when an appraisal is turned in, it's gotta be done properly for the bank to accept it. In this particular case, it's not a bank that's accepting it, it's us that are accepting it. But based on the two that were given to me, and I looked at, and the appraiser pointed out some things. Now, Mr. Hussein had mentioned that he had other appraisers look at it. And when he mentioned that to me, I told him, "With all due respect, you know, I don't know who you talked to, I don't know what conversations you had, I'd like to get a third-party, myself personally, to look at this." And when this appraiser looked at it, he mentioned that there was just a lot of things that were just not consistent with a good appraisal that was given to him.
So Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
Last announcement. I personally have been coming to this council meeting, talking to you guys. While the mayor is listening, I don't know, I don't even know whether he's understanding or comprehending, this particular city does owe me money. It's in black and white. It's my last time making this announcement, if by next council meeting. Mayor and Mr. Miyake, both of you guys, do not come up to a solution, not only for me, for every single resident who lived on Hanover. And pay them their money? Expect a class-action lawsuit against the city. And if you guys, as if you've mentioned it before, Mr. Miyake, claim, listen, excuse me, you gotta listen to me, you gotta listen to me.
Okay, okay.
You gotta listen to me. You have to listen to me, I don't have to listen to you.
All right, all right. Calm down.
If he has mentioned before, they did whatever they did to save the North End, not to pay for the South End, when a class-action lawsuit gets filed, everybody gotta pay for it. Still, I'm a still a resident of the city, I might still have to pay for it, but guess what? I will not let you or your mayor rip anybody off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair, if I may respond to this.
Make it brief, please.
Sure. I had really no active involvement in this program. I don't know what is going on. And moreover, everything was reviewed by the state and by the feds. So, you know, if there's some problem, I'm not sure what it is that requires him to make these accusations against the mayor and me when it's all reviewed.
Well, it's his freedom of speech, and he's allowed to say.
I'm not making any accusation, you can go back in records, and you could see yourself talking about this. As a matter of fact, last council meeting, you had a whole stack of paper, and you kept mentioning my name and my particular property, thinking yourself you got enough information. You don't have no information, sir. Get your facts straight, then come back and face me. Do you understand that?
Not interested in facing.
Thank you.
Well, then, then, then good luck. Then good luck.
Okay, well.
Okay.
Then could you do yourself a favor?
Okay, sir.
Excuse me, no, no, I'm not stopping. Why did you stop, and you did not disclose to everybody?
Relax.
What the city have won against Wayne County back in 2010?
Okay, okay. Point of order at this point.
Has he ever mentioned to you guys that the city have won a consent judgment against Wayne County, specifically for the E. Quash Creek?
Yes.
Tell them that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, any further?
No, I'll tell you my address, but I'm not saying my name. Good evening. Let's end this night on good news. I don't want to say except, congratulations to the three who got appointed. I couldn't be more happy than to see you guys back on the city council.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You've done a great job for the residents and for the city. And for those who lost, I wish them good luck, and I wish that they come, if they are really want to serve the city, to show their faces from time to time in the city council, to learn about it, and in two years, they hopefully can run for reelection. Other than that, I wish you good night, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Hey, do I hear a?
No.
Oh, yeah?
No, you don't hear anything yet.
Let me add this, are you?
Sorry. I'll be brief. Status on the, Mr. Mayor, through the chair, the concrete Hanover FEMA project, those curbs, Mr. Mayor? This is through the chair.
Counselor Chair, I don't have an update for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. What?
Through the chair, I was asking the mayor the status of the concrete curb mess on the FEMA project on Hanover.
Can you address that, Mr. Mayor?
I don't have an update.
You don't have it? Okay. He has no update.
Okay. It was brought up that the, that the water situation, being able to deduct the taxes on your, excuse me, the increased taxes deducted on your, on your income taxes at the end of the year. Well, due to the, I don't know if most people know, but due to the tax laws that came into effect this last year under the Trump administration, standard deduction for most people won't allow you to make those deductions, because the standard deduction is much higher. allow you to make those deductions, because the standard deduction is much higher. So most of us won't be able to use this deduction for increased taxes, property taxes or otherwise. Thank you very much. I think probably the council probably is aware of this, but we have all these projects that are coming up, these CSO projects that are coming up. Would probably be a good idea for all the residents and for everyone to know, perhaps a flow chart, what's coming up, when they're coming up, and the total costs. And so if there's an outlay, a flow chart, and so that if we can't make these budgets, plus what they're going to affect the water rates, okay, then we need to bond them out. Instead of at the last minute, where's the money going to come from? Well, we're going to know where the money's going to come from. We need to put bonds up, what we need to do. Let's not spring it all up at the last minute. Everybody's water rates are out of control, and the water fund money bucket way overfull. We can't continue to afford it. I want to support the chief. Thank you very much, chief. Your words on officer suicide, I went through it myself. Your officer, Mikowski, I went to the academy with him. In 2010, we lost two officers, and Taylor. When I retired, the year after I retired, I went through a lot of stuff myself. I went through a program in California, West Coast Post-Trauma Retreat. I'd like to let you know, and your officers know, that it's a support program for officers going through post-traumatic stress. It's an excellent program. Here, it's for veterans, but a lot of cops arrest veterans. So it's not a great program for officers. It's for first responders. It's a great program. It happens to a lot of officers, firefighters. We all see a lot of bad stuff every day. It's not just officers killed in the line of duty, but a lot of bad stuff. It's real, and I'm very happy to see that you're putting your officers first. That's a great program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Adella, you need...
Mr. Mackey, get back in here.
I just wanted to, I'm calling you out in a good way. Just wanted to say that driving on beach daily on a regular basis and seeing that building go up, I can tell you, it brought a smile to my face. So I just want to tell you, beautiful job. I haven't seen what's on the inside, but you're doing a beautiful job. It made our city even more beautiful. So thank you very much. Just wanted to tell you, beautiful job and great job. Thank you. Tired of calling you out like that.
Any further public comment?
Brief to the jury?
Okay. I hear a motion.
One more.
Come.
Come on.
Line up.
Don't trip.
You have three minutes. Name, please.